I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brett, you want to lead us in a prayer, please?
Pray with me. Father, we thank you for all of the blessings that you bestow upon us each and every day. Please be with our athletes as they perform their skills and keep them safe from injury and during their travels. Keep our national leaders' hearts in line with the good of humanity and in mind for all of their actions. And also be with our men and women of the armed forces as well as our veterans as they serve us overseas and at home. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Roll call.
Dr. Kincaid.
Here.
Mr. Newsom. Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Truitt. Mrs. Zimmershey.
Here.
This time we'll have presentation of the Employee of the Month and Friends of Education. Come on.
Mr. Newsom.
Mr. Newsom.
Welcome.
First of all, we'll have Certified Employee of the Month, Megan Stafford, teacher at Washington Pre-K.
All right. We on? Okay. I'm Barbara Davis and I'm principal at Washington Pre-K Center and I'm excited this evening to get to award one of my teachers as Certified Employee of the Month. This is Megan Stafford and what we've said about her is with the current conditions in education, it's now more important than ever to promote a positive climate in our buildings and our organization. It is our privilege to have the opportunity to recognize Megan Stafford as a teacher at Washington Pre-K that goes the extra mile to provide sport for our entire staff. She's the one who's always ready to put on a party, plan an event, give someone an encouraging call, or just to take on extra responsibilities. Megan is a vital member of our hospitality committee. She's planned our volunteer breakfast, headed up our support employee recognition activities, currently serves on our leadership team, volunteered to pick up our pumpkins for the pumpkin patch, and even redecorated our lounge over this summer. She's always doing something to promote unity and boost staff morale. We are proud to recognize Megan Stafford as Ponca City Public Schools Certified Employee of the Month for November. Thank you, Megan, for all you do. We are proud of her.
Next, we'll have the Support Employee of the Month, Lori Bruder, Title I Teacher Assistant at West Middle School.
The PCPS Board of Education Support Staff of the Month of November 2017 is Lori Bruder. Lori is an integral part of the reading program at West Middle School and is a tremendous help to both the reading and language arts teachers. She helps make sure all students are star tested in a timely fashion and then makes sure reading levels are established. She is our go-to girl to answer questions or to get help with the Reading Plus Fluency Program. Lori is always looking for ways that she can help us teach our students in the classroom. She's made the department flashcards for Figureative Language and she helps keep us organized and moving forward by copying RSA cards and compiling class sets of novels for the teachers. Throughout the year, she works with small groups of students on a daily basis to help remediate skills. Lori has a special ability of being able to explain or teach that skill in another way so that the student has another way to grasp the material. She's an absolute joy to work with and is really considered the backbone of our successful program. Lori is a wonderful asset to West and we appreciate her very much. Thank you, Lori, for everything you do for our department and our kids.
Last is the Friends of Education, Contractors Safety Alliance Group, CSA at P-66, volunteer at Poe High.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Rachel's story of kindness and compassion set against the backdrop of the Columbine tragedy is one that produces an intensely personal, reflective experience, an awakening of the innate desire for human connection and the urge to take immediate action. CSA did not stop with just bringing forward Rachel's challenge to help the schools but to help the families and the community. CSA continues to be faithful in supporting the FOR Club financially, morally, and with physical support. With their belief and support, we believe we can overcome the negative with the positive and continue to grow intellectually and continue to assist with the community, making it better for all. Ponca City School District and Poe High are very grateful to have the Contractors Safety Alliance as a friend of education.
Well, they may want to stay for the presentation. I think he's just taking the baby out.
Now, or wait?
We'll do the basketball presentation and then after the basketball presentation we'll...
After the basketball presentation, we'll have your pictures, okay? Sorry. Right now, we have the pleasure of having Jody and Keenan and Jared talking about the girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and our new Robinson improvements. So who wants to start?
Come on up. Everybody can just come on up.
All of you, come on up here.
Girls first.
You dressed up like I did, big boy.
Some of us have been working.
Oh, right.
Well, first of all, we just want to, we want to thank you guys for your support with the bond. Without this, you know, facilities were in need of upgrade. Everybody knows that and you guys had the forethought to help make that happen and we brought some girls here and some boys to let you guys hear what it means to them, the bond and the facility upgrades and just everything that's going on at Ponca City because it's a good time to be a Wildcat and I've heard a lot of people say that and that's starting to catch on and it's, we're excited. We're excited for our season, but not just for that, but for the school and where leadership is taking us. And it definitely starts here and works its way down through the A.D. and the principals and everything. And I want to, you know, say thank you first of all and then let the girls talk and then let the boys talk about some things.
Hi, I'm Ally Jennings. I'm a senior and we are all seniors. We are really happy about the gym. It's really nice and we had a really good season last year and it's just like a great honor for us to be able to come back and play our senior year in such an amazing facility. I'll put money to anyone that our gym is the nicest one in the state and we're just really proud of it and we're really excited to play our last year in it and we thank you guys for everything that you have done to help with that.
My name's Zoe Freeman and I'm really thankful that you guys helped us get this and everything. And like Ally said, I'm really excited that our senior year, we get to play in this new facility with the new court and everything else, the new scoreboard that's on top and everything and yeah, thank you.
I'm Bailey Broome. Thank you guys for the court. We have people, coaches and players from different soccer, softball, come in and watch us and just admire the floor and it's really nice. Thank you guys.
Hi, I'm Jalissa Garcia. I'm a senior. It's really great to be a part of this team. We've all been working hard and I see you guys have been working hard to help us look good out there and court looks amazing, the stands, everything and we're just super grateful and all we really got to say about that.
Awesome.
You know, today was our first day in it and, you know, we went out there and they kind of went out, you know, some of them kind of trickled out and then when they got out there, you could see, see a lot of them had big smiles on their face. Jalissa sat down on the floor and just kind of, just soaked it all in and enjoyed it and, you know, it's, we've been all over the state, you know, in the last couple of years since I've been here and there's some places that may be bigger, but there's not going to be any place that we go to this year that's going to be nicer with the upgrades that have happened and all the forethought that was put in. It's not just that the, you know, the bond got passed, it's the leadership and the forethought from Brett and a whole lot of other people that collaborated on this and, you know, I know Jared and I have talked a million times and Brett and I and Shelley and I and some of you guys up here, but, you know, we thank you for the leadership that you guys have shown and for the care, you know, and it's not just basketball and it's not just wrestling, but there's so many other facilities that got upgraded and it's not just athletics, but I'm appreciative and I'm glad that I'm here and I look forward to it, so.
Keenan Curry. All right. I want to say thank you very much for everything you guys have done for us. It's been awesome. We've heard a lot of great things from the community, from family that's come into town. My 92-year-old grandfather came into town and he was like, "Man, do you still coach in college?" You know, because, you know, the gym seems like a college gym, just the atmosphere as far as the court look and the seats and things like that. So my guys are ready to get on the court. We weren't, we didn't get a chance to get on there today, but Jody says if we keep on practicing well, we'll just stay in the boys' gym and hopefully that keeps us going, so. My guys, they've been working really hard. I'm really excited about them and I'll talk a little bit more about them, but this is P.O. Seals. He's our senior, he's our only senior, so he'll start it off. They're a little bit scared and the crowd's shy.
You'll do great.
So at least they look pretty nice, so.
Yeah, I just want shirts.
Like you said, I'm P.O. Seals and I'm just really thankful for everything they've done in helping us get our new facilities and just can't wait to get out there and play some games.
I'm Chad Schumansky and I'm thankful that we got that gym because it's kind of like a new start for us because, you know, we didn't really have the year that we were hoping for last year, but we got a new coach and some new faces and now with new gymnasium, it looks really good, so thank you.
I'm Luke Seals. I'm a sophomore. I'm just really thankful for the new court. Makes us look good, play good. I hope for a good season and thank you guys.
I'm Chase Matson, also known as E. I'm really thankful that new court, we're gonna, we'll have a good season this year with a new coach, new court mentality, going out there, get them dubs.
I have a great group of kids. I mean, I'm really excited about them and like I said, we've been working pretty hard. Those guys have been working even harder and, you know, once we get on the floor, hopefully we can play just as well as, you know, that court looks and make you guys proud and the city and the community, so I appreciate it, we appreciate it and look forward to seeing you guys at some games.
Heck, yeah.
Okay, Jody and Keenan, here's the expectation. Twenty wins apiece. You need to go to the state because this is your third year here. Keenan will cut you some slack, you only have to go to regionals. Twenty games, twenty wins each.
Wait, where'd you get the sweatshirts?
These are our travels.
BSN. I kind of like them a lot. Thank you for coming. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Now, the pictures are going to be taken for the people that got the awards.
Yeah, it's nice. There goes our crowd.
Now, we're back down to the regular group.
Jody's looking pretty good. He's got a fast-looking jacket, too.
I know. Where did he get his?
He gets them.
BSN Sports is the company that we deal with and what about them?
Jared, you didn't have anything to say?
We did a great job. I would say, and we publicize this, but we'd love to see everybody Friday night. We're going to have our winter pep rally bash at Robinson starting at 6:00. We'll introduce all of those winter teams and spirit teams, the cheer, high steppers. Then we'll have a short basketball scrimmage and it's going to serve as an open house, too, where we let folks see the wrestling facility that we've upgraded and then also everything that's gone on in Robinson. And then I'm also going to announce that night, if anybody'd like to step out that side door, we're going to open up the press box and let the public do a little bit of a walk through and see the press box as well at night, so.
We want to compliment you and what you've done.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
As an A.D.
It's been an easy transition, so it's like, I think we've all coined that phrase, it's great not to be a Wildcat, so we're excited about what's going on.
Good. All right, no public comments at this time. So we're going to do annual safety report by Brett.
Well, as required, we're supposed to give you an annual safety report. Any questions?
Basketball was more interesting.
Basketball was a lot more interesting, although the safety of our students and staff is a pretty good subject. We'll see if we can get this PowerPoint going right quick. A lot of the things that the state and federal government makes us do as far as safety of our students and staff, this is just one part of it, just kind of updates you. Most of it, you know, because a lot of it goes hand in hand with our construction projects, but then there's a lot more to it as well. If I can get this going, there we go. Security entrances and lobby guards, those are things I know that you're aware of, but we've got some that we still have yet to do, but we've got a good, good start on us and I'll get to those here in just a moment. Camera systems, we've got to have an upgrade. We started with these camera systems back in 2001, so a lot of them are very outdated. Some of them don't work anymore. We've got most of them that do, but our software system is not something that's been very user-friendly and so we've struggled with that for quite a few years. It's, we can use it, but it's just not a good system. Last year and the year before, we had a maintenance agreement with the company that we purchased the software system from in order to keep our cameras up to date and it's a struggle. Some of our systems were old analog systems and we've had to upgrade those to an IP system and converting, conversion in the middle sometimes doesn't work very well, so those need to be upgraded. So we've got some wiring issues, we've got a software issue, but most importantly, and it seems kind of a moot point, except it's very much needed, is the servers are not big enough to handle all the things that go on with the camera system because you have video and it just takes up a tremendous amount of room. So that's probably the worst part about our camera system right now. It shuts down, goes off, shuts down, goes off, then may not come back on again. So all those things in mind, we're going to need an upgrade and I mentioned it to the property committee. I've got two companies that we're getting quotes from and I've got a third company that's going to look into it as well. So we're going to try to get the biggest bang for our buck and one that we can utilize. Just a little bit of history before I go on, because I'll try to make this as fast as I can, is, you know, we first did security cameras for security of the building, but very quickly it became kind of a deterrent or a space for our principals to monitor kids because that became a safety issue. You know, you can use, you can find kids doing things they're not supposed to be doing, but fights or something that we happened last year when we had the flood, you know, a kid set fire to one of those paper towel dispensers, that could have been a very serious issue. So security cameras are good for more than just that, but that's how they started out. You know, our SROs, the Resource Officers, we've got one at the middle schools that travels back and forth and one at the high school. Security guards at our secondary schools, that would just be really over at the high school. We utilized one for a little bit over at Lincoln and at West whenever we had some transition with construction issues, but our security guards basically just monitor the parking lots. But they also are staged in the front for our security entrance, so they're monitoring people coming and going in the high school and then they've got one that walks around too and then maybe even gets in a car and drives around the perimeter. So they're keeping our secondary school over there as safe as they possibly can, so extra eyes, so to speak. And then barriers and corridors. Really, the only corridor that we really had before is over at Roosevelt in order to transfer kids from the main building to the annex, but we're currently in progress with that corridor that goes from the Howe Building to the Fine Arts, so that'll be completed Security entrances, the high school doesn't have any ballistic glass at this point, so that's part of the bond issue that we're going to address with their entrance. Other than that, we've got them cordoned off, we've got electronic doors, we've got a security guard and we've got a lobby guard. So we're in good shape, but it doesn't have any ballistic glass, so we want to incorporate that so it meets the same standard as the other schools. Central Services Center, where our Wildcat and our technology and child nutrition department is, they don't have a secure entrance. And we found a couple instances this last year and this year that had been very handy to have one. You know, you get kids in high school that make threats, you never know what's going to happen, so it makes people a little bit nervous. So we need to have that entrance over there secure and so they can operate that. In doing that, we also find out that we don't have enough bathroom space over there, so that really isn't a safety issue, it's a health issue, I guess you could call that safety, but they don't have enough bathroom space, so we need to increase the number of restrooms there. That's going to be quite an expensive project because the sewer system will not allow that expansion, so we need to replace it as well. But you know, whenever we start a construction project, codes kicks in, so there'll be other things that'll have to happen, so it all just gets more expensive, just to let you know. It doesn't have a fire sprinkler system and that'll have to be one of those things, so we'll keep you updated as we go. East Middle School, West Woodlands, all those that you see listed there all have safe entrances now. Washington Pre-K is another one that we've got to finish and I'd like to be able to see if we can't get that accomplished this summer and that'd be something that we're probably going to do with building fund money, so we'll keep that in mind. It doesn't have any ADA access, so an elevator will be something else that we're going to be looking at, Washington Pre-K Center. So pretty good projects all at one time, so more of a construction update instead of safety, right? What else have we done? Of course, we drill. We drill and we drill. We practice. It's state mandated. We've done it for years before the state mandated too much and we really do, I think, a very good job at it. A lot of training goes on, collaboration with the city and the state, Philip 66, we do all of those, we have those meetings, we have safety events and we have training exercises that we combine ourselves with those folks because we're all in it together. Asking questions, trying to figure out what we're supposed to be doing, our safety committees, that's what they're for. You see the number 12 down there, our safety committees, they're asking questions, they're telling us what's going on at their schools, they're letting us know what needs to be done or what is being done right. So inquiry for those systems. Sprinkler systems, we've almost got those completed throughout the district. Wildcat was one of those. Knox boxes, if you're not familiar, that's how the city mandates us to put a locked box, which is like Fort Knox, Knox box, at all of our sites. It has a key, we don't have a key to, only the city does, really it's only the fire department, that they can get in, get a key to our building so they can come in so they don't have to bust down a door in case there's a fire. So those are on all of our buildings. So we incorporate those in our construction progress, projects. And then our designs, of course, with our architects and engineers, making sure we stay up to date, try to stay with up and coming things, technologies, the way you build buildings so you don't create hidey holes and blind spots down hallways, all those things go in hand in hand with what we're doing as well. Alarm systems and monitoring, of course, our alarm systems, we've got fire alarm systems we've been putting in and upgrading those, but we're also doing, have alarm systems that, and being monitored for our elevators. That's something we're in progress of updating now to kind of get off of our AT&amp;T lines and they'll all be on IP. That'll save us a ton of money in the long run. Procedures, flip charts, manuals, controlled access, that's our entrances, communication with our citizens and our school staff and our students, our call-out systems, part of that communication, that's a safety issue that helps us get that information out in case we have to shut down school, in case we have a gas leak or we have, you know, snow closings and so forth. Timelines and challenges, money's always an issue. Anytime that you have this stuff, it's probably going to cost money. If it's not in construction, then it's technology, those kinds of things that go along with it. And the factors of completion, sometimes the state throws a monkey wrench in what we want to do because they decide we need to go another direction. Bond issues have completion timelines. Our lease revenue bonds says we have to complete some of these projects in a certain period of time, but we've got six years to get it all done. You know, those completion deadlines and dates are something that we need to follow in the implementation of those. Some issues that are causing delays or impending progress, well, money, of course, will be one of those. State mandates also coincide with that. And problems that was not anticipated. For example, something happens nationwide, something happens, the Sandy Hook, that was one reason why we started doing these safe entrances. You know, we have a goal or a six-year plan or a capital improvement plan and it's got all these things in line, what we want to get accomplished, and then the Sandy Hook thing will come about and it'll make us change direction. You know, so those things that we have to keep in mind every time that we decide we're going to do something different or keep up with what is necessary for the state and for our own good. Our safety plan, our safety plan is a throwing binder that all the schools have, the same plan is on the flip charts that we also have printed every couple, two, three years because they're pretty expensive. They're around $1,700 to $2,000 to get those printed up and really it's only changes of, minor changes that happen every so often, mostly names, so we don't print them every year. But all of these things are in our safety plan, so what we want to practice with in the event something happens, building damage, tornadoes, severe floods, hazardous materials, those programs are in there as a guide so we can get through those events. No event is ever going to be the same, no two of them are ever going to be the same, but this is a nice guide to get you started and then you adapt, adapt as you go. Our schedule, timeline for success, it's ongoing and never-ending. We will always just keep moving on in order to be successful in the safety of our students and staff. An ongoing commitment to our community for the safe, for the safety of our students and staff. Our commitment to the community in forms of maybe the bond issue for projects that allow for student safety, safe rooms, for example, as long as they know what we're doing, I think that they'll always vote for it, especially if it has something to do with the good and the safety of our students and staff. Effective communication, first thing to go wrong in everything that, anything, anything that ever happens, whether it's police and fire or wedding planning, communication's generally the first thing that breaks down. So that's something that we always have to strive to correct and continue to strive to be good at it and be flexible when it doesn't work right. Attention from all the players to be effective action, so everybody who's involved with it needs to, needs to be effective and pay attention to everything that goes on. There's lots of different ways of doing that and we won't get into that tonight. As I mentioned, some of the costs, every two or three years, our printed manuals, our flip charts, construction costs, that's always something that comes out there because we've got a 4% or more increase in construction costs each year. That's just inflation, so we count on that. It may not be quite four, but that's kind of an average. Sometimes it could be more, sometimes it could be less. We used to use a 3%, but it's changed a little. Technology increases costs. You need more server space, those kinds of things that happen. Our fire alarm systems. Bond issue passage and associated costs with that development because you have architects, you have engineering, you've got our finance guys, all those things that go along with it and of course, of course, training and state mandated requirements in case you end up with budget, shortfalls. Our resources, of course, for all of this stuff, our bond issues help with the construction, a building fund also incorporated in there, state provided training, our OSSI folks down at Homeland Security, they provide free training, our National Safety Council provides training and then we do the same. Collaborative agreements for support from our local, our local governments, we have a fantastic relationship with our local governments, they help us tremendously. Using cost-effective means to get satisfying results, the assistance of professional organizations dedicated to safety, some of those I had mentioned. A for LE is Association for Learning Environments is one of those. They are an international group that helps us as well as the National Safety Council and others. And of course, the goals for the next review, we update the plan annually or as needed. We have to give this plan to our local EMS, our fire, our police, our county. All those folks get a copy of our plan in any format that they want to and we give them updates as needed. We give an annual report to you so you know what's going on and you can ask questions, reporting to advances in technology in regards to safety or best practices, that's always coming out, somebody's always got a better idea, and secure the plan for the best possible course of action for student and safety, staff safety. So that is my safety report. Do you have any questions? All right. Well, thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
This time, we'll have the superintendent's report with potential board discussion.
This time, we'll have the superintendent's report with potential board discussion.
All right, a couple of things to report on tonight. We certified our dropout report on October 31st, and by law, we have to discuss the results at the next open meeting after certification, so we're going to discuss those results. And if you want to take a look at those, these are color-coded. Blue obviously stands for Poe High. Red is our alternative schools, which counts for, which accounts for Wildcat Academy, Teen Pep, and our SHARE program, and East and West. And I did a five-year comparison for you, so that you can see how we've improved over the last five years. And we're going to talk about some of those improvements. Something to note, if there is a dropout from a middle school, let's say East or West, it's typically because the student left the district and our district never received requests for records from another district. We try to seek out that information from the family, but sometimes we take a hit on that. So why the improvements? We can only hypothesize, something that we've changed in the last few years at the high school is our relationship between principals, counselors, and students. We divided our students up into four quadrants by their last name, and they stay with the same principal and the same counselor year after year. So, that allows the principal and the counselors to have a better relationship with the students and with the families, and to be more familiar with their graduation and on-track progress requirements. So, we think that has made a huge impact. Obviously, we reported for Poe High, four dropouts this year, and three from the alternative school. Just a little bit of information, our Wildcat Academy students and our Teen Pep students have until September 15th of the following year to graduate. So, those results are reflective after September 15th, the 2017 results. Once a student turns 19, we do not have to report on our state accreditation report or state dropout report if they are a dropout. So, any questions?
What's your definition of a dropout, timing-wise?
Timing-wise, for example...
If I go my junior year, just don't show up my senior year, is that a dropout?
Yeah, that's a dropout, if they don't graduate.
But, if they transfer...
If they transfer to another district, and we, and the district requests records from us, then we, it's on the next district.
If they move out of state and we know nothing about them, it's still considered a dropout?
If, if we don't get another district requesting records. Now, some of our students homeschool, that doesn't, if we have the letter on file that they are being homeschooled, that doesn't count against us on the dropout report, but it does count against us on our graduation rate, which is a different report, so... And I'll have to tell you, if you look at 2013, we had a lot of dropouts, and we went in and did some investigating, and there were some clerical issues. And at that time, we developed some procedures for tracking more appropriately. We will stay in contact with the families if schools haven't requested records. We'll try to find out where the family's been, so we're more diligent with our processes as to track these families for students that may leave the district. Any questions? Okay, the next thing I want to talk to you a little bit about is our alternative education programs. And our alternative education programs, of course, we have the SHARE program where we share with Pioneer Technology, and then we have Wildcat Academy, which is our alternative school, and Teen Pep, which is our program for pregnant students or students with children. We have an onsite daycare, and because the mothers are in the same building with their students, we do not have to follow the DHS regulations in regard to that. So, first of all, I want to talk a little bit about Wildcat Academy. Currently, we have 94 students, and when we first took this over from the OnBudsmann program, we didn't have near the number of students. We've increased our number of teachers, and it's such a successful program. Carla Streeter is the director of all of our alternative and online programs, and she does a great job with our students. We have five certified teachers at Wildcat Academy. We have Josh Swain, Steve Harris, Danielle McCollum, Gary Curtley, and Mark Kimbrel. As of 2016, 2017 school year, we had 58 graduates. And those, that includes those numbers of students who graduated on or before September 15th. Since September 15th, this is a brand-new, updated number today, we've had three graduates to date since September 15th. So, in the last month of, month and a half, we've had three more graduates. Our school hours, on average, for the week are five hours and 45 minutes daily. The requirements for alternative programs are five hours and 15 minutes a day, so we go 15 minutes more. Talk a little bit about Teen Pep. Currently, we have 13 students, we're down a few students than we were last year, and that's always a good thing. That's the goal of the program, is to be down students in that area. We just have one certified teacher at this time, her name is Mary Ann Kessler O'Neil. We had six graduates last year, and through September 15th of this school year. And we've had two graduates to date since September 15th. Their school hours are the same, five hours and 45 minutes daily. The programs that we use at Wildcat Academy and Teen Pep are an online program that offers 50-course options, and it's called Edgenuity. Now, with our certified teachers there, they are there to support the students. Many times, the online courses have a video that the students and the teachers will watch together, and then work through some of the issues, and the teacher may do small group interventions if students have a specific question about a course. So they're not just put on a computer to complete the course on their own. It is self-paced, it allows students to work at their own pace, and they can even work at home if they're so motivated to do so, which is the beauty of this program. At Wildcat Academy, both math and English courses are taught by site teachers. Our math teacher there is Mark Kimbrel, and our English teacher is Danielle McCollum. So they teach those courses. English is taught by the site teacher at Teen Pep, and Mary Ann Kessler O'Neil is certified in English. And I'll go back and reiterate that if they are teaching one of those core courses, they have to be certified in that area. Students may earn multiple credits per year, no limit, or per semester. And we have several partnerships with our alternative education programs. And one is the Oklahoma Department of Health, and they actually send people in to talk to the girls and the students. They talk to the girls about child development and health of their babies, and taking care of themselves. They talk to our students, they offer, they provide counseling oftentimes to our students at Wildcat Academy. The Ponca City Leadership Alumni happens to be the pie partner for Teen Pep, and they organize the store at Teen Pep. And in the store, we have donated items, diapers, things for their babies, clothing. And the girls actually earn points to shop in the store if they complete courses or for attendance and things like that. So it's a really well-organized program, and the girls really like the store. Northern Oklahoma College Nursing students actually go in for clinical hours and work at Teen Pep, and again, support the girls with their babies and their own health. And then NOISE, Northern Oklahoma Youth Services, goes into both Wildcat Academy and Teen Pep and offers services, counseling services. One thing that I do want to tell you, both Kirk Hollis and Kathy Metzger, our district therapists, do individual and group counseling at Wildcat Academy, but just Kathy Metzger goes into Teen Pep and does counseling, it's a female thing, so Kathy does that at Teen Pep. Edward Jones is our pie partner for Wildcat Academy, and Jody Klein has been very instrumental in providing all kinds of opportunities, incentives, all kinds of things for Wildcat Academy students, and she's a great pie partner. Quality Inn is also a pie partner for Wildcat Academy, and Shirley Neal kind of heads up that project, and she and Jody work together, and they're just real amazed with the progress from Wildcat Academy and do some incredible things for our students, lots of incentives and motivational things. Both alternative schools participate in the Oklahoma Regional Food Bank. And actually, five of our students at Wildcat Academy are taking a community service class. And Coach Swain orders the food from the Oklahoma Regional Food Bank, and these five students pick up the food for Wildcat Academy and Teen Pep, and they distribute it to the students. We actually have a food pantry down at 111 West Grand, where alternative service where Wildcat Academy is located. And these five students who are in the, in the community service class actually distribute this food to both the students at Wildcat Academy and Teen Pep. And we also make sure that we order things like juice, and trail mix, and pretzels, so that they'll have snacks throughout the day, because a lot of times the students are at school hungry. So that's a great project, and the food pantry, like I mentioned, is at Wildcat Academy. We encourage kids to take something from the food pantry every day. If they don't, all of our alternative students have the opportunity to visit the food pantry every Thursday. Now, per regulations, we have an evaluation from OTAC, which is the Oklahoma Technical Assistance Center. And you can see our ratings, and I'll talk to you about the ones that could be a little bit different. You see that we were highly effective in appropriately designed to serve those most at risk. Our faculty selection is because our ratio should be about one to every 15 students to be highly effective. We are one to 15 at Wildcat Academy, I'm sorry, Teen Pep this year, but we weren't last year. So hence the reason for the effective rating last year in both. We still are just at effective at Wildcat Academy with 94 students and five teachers. In taking screening, last year, we were highly effective at Wildcat Academy, but just effective at Teen Pep. And what they do at Wildcat Academy is, they actually interview the students, they look at their discipline patterns, their grades, are they serious about wanting to graduate? They have an interview process. They didn't do that at Teen Pep last year, but they do this year, so that will change as well. State and local collaboration, both are highly effective. Graduation plan, highly effective. Because of the numbers at both Wildcat Academy and Teen Pep, all of our certified teachers make a weekly contact with parents. So that makes a huge difference in building relationships with students and parents, and then keeping them on track with graduation. And as each student finishes a course, Carla Streeter, the director, meets with each student, and they review their graduation plan, track their graduation plan. Individualized instruction, both of that's an effective. If we were, if all of our subjects were teacher-taught, we would have had highly effective in both of those areas. Effective instruction, we just got effective at Teen Pep, because we don't have a math teacher there. We just have an English teacher there. Counseling and social services, this is the one where we were, we only had minimally compliant at Teen Pep. And that's because we don't have our own counselor that is at Teen Pep. We have one counselor going out there now, which is Kathy Metzger, where Wildcat Academy has both Kathy Metzger and Kirk Hollis. Now, next year, those scores should change. We have designated Audra Mason, a counselor at the high school, as the official counselor for Teen Pep and Wildcat Academy, in addition to our high school duties.
Was that a staffing issue last year? Why did we not have one?
Well, we actually would have sent another counselor out there, but because of our partnerships, Mary Ann Kessler O'Neil felt that NOISE counseling was meeting, and the nursing students, and the mental health department were actually helping meet the needs that the girls had at that point. So she didn't feel that another counselor was necessary, so that's why we got minimally compliant. But we expect that to change for this evaluation, because we have Audra Mason assigned there as well. Life skills instruction, effective, highly effective would be... That we're focusing so much on core, life skills, we think that will improve, because now we're working with kids on how to interview, dress for an interview, make application. So we think we'll have highly effective next year. Those were some of the ideas they gave us last year. Arts education is effective, we think will be highly effective next year. Leslie Benz is our art instructor at both Wildcat Academy and Teen Pep, and we've kind of upped her time serving both. And then self-evaluation, highly effective. Then you can see that we were able to answer yes on all those course requirements, curriculum standards, certification standard, teacher-student ratio, budget, and student participation. So, there's a lot of good things going on at both of our alternative programs, and obviously, you can see that we've produced lots of graduates from students that otherwise may not have been successful at their traditional high school. So, any questions on our alternative education programs? All right. That's it.
Item six, consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move for motion for item six, one through four.
Motion's been made for items one through four, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been made, any discussion? Not, we'll vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Item seven, seven-one, considering taking action on the following district financial reports. Do we vote on these separately?
No, we had a good meeting.
Yeah, we talked about all of my move that we approve, item 7.1 in its entirety.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, we'll vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Seven-two, considering taking action on setting the date, time, and location for the 2018 board meetings.
Move for approval for seven-point-two.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? We'll vote.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Seven-three, considering taking action on accepting subcontract bids for the West Middle School remodeled.
Yeah, I move for approval of seven-point-three.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I do have a question for Ross. Looking at both the West Middle School, I wasn't in the property committee meeting, and the football locker room, and all of them. Other than plumbing, HVAC, and electrical, we're really not getting any bids from any local people to speak of. Are they just not bidding, or their prices, or...
Well, it depends on what's the package. For one, the floor covering was a big item on this. We don't have necessarily a local floor, flooring contractor that has the manpower to tackle that type of a job. Probably a little scary. We don't have really a local select demo contractor. Most of that, on smaller scales, done by your general contractor.
Sure, and I understand that.
So, you know, a lot of that's drywall. It's done by, any of that work's done by general contractors. We don't have a drywall subcontractor in town.
And I guess the reason for my question, I'm hit up all the time, how come we're not hiring more local people? You know, local people support us, they pay taxes, but we're trying to hire local. If they don't bid, there's nothing you can do about it.
If they don't bid, I mean, if it's a public bid limit, I mean, if they can, if the bid's under 50,000, they only have to produce a bomb.
Right.
It's open to the public, we can't discourage anybody from bidding.
Do you normally, anything under 50,000, just take the low bidder?
Yeah. Unless there's...
Extenuating.
...history or something, something like that. But it's open, we make those phone calls, we talk to as many of the local people as we can. It's, we can't force them to bid.
Sure. Okay.
Any other discussion? Then we'll vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We heard it.
It's on record.
We heard it. I just wanted to hear it. He told me that earlier, but I wanted to make sure.
Are you happy now?
I'm happy now. It's on record.
All right, we'll vote.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
7-5, considering take action on change order number 2 for the Garfield Festivale remodel.
Motion to approve 7.5.
Second?
Hold on, hold on. I'll go ahead and second it.
Any discussion? We'll vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
7-6, considering take action on licensing agreement between Ponca City Schools and the city of Ponca City.
Yes, I motion for that one.
You want to say something about that? Some of you may not know.
Actually, yes, I will. Don Bohan reached out to me, and they wanted to use our mascot, which is the head back there leaning against the wall, just on the front fender, just in front of the driver's side door. And he actually sent me a picture where they had photoshopped that onto their police cars, they're getting new striping on their newer cars, and they still want to use that head on their older cars, that they're not going to put the striping on. We checked our logo and licensing agreement, and there's certain color formulas that we have to use, and we have not trademarked or registered for trademark, but Gary drew us up a licensing agreement, just so that people, if they, we have the authority to say who can use it or not, just so that we have some kind of agreement. If I haven't shown you the picture, I'm not sure that I showed curriculum. No. I'll show it to you. It looks really good, and I think it would go a long way of promoting school and community continuity. And he's thrilled about it, and we're thrilled about it, and I told him that you were voting on it tonight, and I'd get back to him.
Is this police cars only, or all city vehicles?
Police cars.
Any other discussion?
We did draft the licensing agreement to make it broad enough...
If they want it.
If they want to.
Correct.
Okay, we'll vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
7-7, considering take action on the following contract agreements. A, agreement with the SHI for renewal of Microsoft license for the district. B, agreement with Payne Education Center for Ponca City Public Schools Teaching Training. C, agreement with Kagan Cooperative for Learning Workshop for Union Elementary and Lincoln Elementary. D, agreement with Old West Cabinets, Inc., for the new lockers at the Pohai Boys Basketball Dressing Room. E, agreement with Haddock Corporation for Promethium Boards. F, agreement with... Say it again? Elevator Corporation for Rath BOIP Phone.
We talked about every one of these in detail at the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee's in agreement to them, so I move that we approve them all in their entirety.
Second.
I have a question, though.
Yes.
So, on the boys locker room, the girls locker room's already done? Is that where we're at? And why weren't...
Ask your...
Yes, they are, they're about 95% done. There's just one last, got to put some doors on the hinge, so the girls can lock up values, but other than that, they are 95%.
Okay. So, they have their own as well?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Any other discussion? Then we'll vote.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
7-8, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve proposed executive session for the following purpose: discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, employment, and personnel on the attached detailed personnel report; discuss confidential conversation with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation; to discuss proposed settlement in the lawsuit regarding state aid miscalculation when advised by retained counsel that disclosure of any additional information will impair the ability of the public body to process the claim and to discuss negotiations.
Motion to approve executive session.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right, we'll vote.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
7-11, considering take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, employment, and personnel shown on attached detailed personnel report.
I move to approve 7-11.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll vote.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
7-12, motions, second discussion, vote to authorize the superintendent of the schools to enter into a settlement agreement based on the terms outlined from state aid allocation mediation.
Motion to approve.
Second?
All right, we'll second it.
Discussion? Vote?
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
7-13, considering take action on the delayed component 10.03, compensation of negotiated agreement with Ponca City Public Schools Association of Classroom Teachers ACT for the 2017 and '18 school year. Need a motion?
I'll go ahead and motion it.
Motion's been made, a second?
Second.
Second been made, in discussion? We'll vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershed?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Item 8, new business?
No new business.
Then I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned.